Hey Chris, I can't hear any of the audio.
We're just getting ready to start.
Oh, there you go. Okay, thanks.
Ready Joe?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's get started. I'll call this city council work session to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Our first item of business is roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne. Councilwoman Perrow. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here. Our next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes. We have adopted the agenda. Next item is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Byrne.
I move that we adopt the, I move that we approve the consent agenda for the clerk to sign and for the council president to attest, or the other way around, for the council president to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Again.
I have a motion is second for the president to sign and clerk to attest the consent agenda items. Any discussion? That then, Mr. Clerk.
You can do voice.
We just do voice vote on that one. It's funny when you move one seat over how it just got to changes. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll go to department and commission reports. First up is our Meridian Youth Advisory Council Quarterly Update. So I went and bites a hand, I don't know if you're coming up, but Isabella and Sophie, come on up and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having us. So the first thing we're going to be, or I'm Sophie, I'm the chair of MIAC. This is my second year being the chair, and I'm also a senior this year at Renaissance High School.
And I'm Isabella. I'm the vice chair of community service, and I'm a junior at Renaissance this year.
So first, we're going to be talking about government affairs. The main thing we had going on since, since the start of the year, oh my goodness, it feels like it's been a while, was having Dave Miles come in as a guest speaker. He basically talked about the different departments of city government and what their roles are. We tried to make it really open, and Dave was really awesome letting people ask their own questions, just seeing like what the youth are interested in and being able to go from there. And just to kind of learn sort of the ins and outs of what happens every day at City Hall.
Sophie, do you want us to ask questions at the end, or just ask questions as you go?
It was fun.
I was just wondering, how does, how did Dave do compared to your other speakers? I mean, was he top, was he middle, or towards the bottom, just kind of curious?
He did awesome, especially because he gave us a bunch of ideas on things to do in the future, like maybe doing a tour of City Hall, because a lot of kids were interested in that, and also trying to incorporate the mayor's podcast into meetings, because a lot of our members are really interested in podcasts. So, very nice job.
Thank you, Sophie. Yes, you did a very nice job, by the way. You'll go far in life.
All right, and then moving into community service. So we had our Sensi Rockathon on 9-9, and during this, MIAC members helped raise money for Camp Rainbow Gold, which is a specially designed camp for those diagnosed with childhood cancer. And during this community service opportunity, they rocked in rocking chairs alongside Eagle Road, raising awareness, and then also raising funding for Camp Rainbow Gold. And then we also participated in the Walked In Alzheimer's on 10-1, which is a community event designed to raise awareness for those who are diagnosed with Alzheimer's, as well as those who have family and friends who have been diagnosed. And so during this, MIAC members helped in greeting participants and then also setting up event booths for the opportunity.
Okay, and then leadership development. So the first thing we did was color communication styles, which is something that should sound pretty familiar, especially in reference to MIAC, because this is something we do every year. But basically, it's an opportunity which this year was led by Sahand for MIAC members to learn more about what their own style of communication is and how to effectively communicate with those around them. So we had them fill out the questionnaire, and then they were able to talk to others who were the same color style as them, to learn more about how they best communicate. Okay, and then it was our Treasure Valley Youth Safety Summit, which was super exciting. That was September 27th. Basically, we spent the whole day at Wahoos, MIAC members, but also a bunch of kids from other schools, just people who are interested in learning more about safety and how it affects youth. Specifically, we talked a lot about traffic safety. We had a keynote speaker there about mental health awareness, also about how to use music to aid in student mental health. I mean, a big highlight from this event is always being able to use the impaired vision goggles while we're doing mini golf, testing out texting while driving on the go-karts. It was a super fun event.
And then moving into some other events. So we had our MIAC kickoff at Wahoos on 8/29, and this was a social event that introduced new MIAC members as well as old MIAC members, and it just encouraged group team building as well as bonding within MIAC itself. It's just a fun event to kick off our year. And then moving into some upcoming events that we're doing moving forward. So this Thursday, we are going to be volunteering at Trunkert Streets, and then we also have Rake Up Meridian coming up in November. And then lastly, we have holiday helpers, which we're currently working on. We're decorating and making decorations for holiday helpers, as well as participating at the event.
If you guys have any questions, feel free.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, I was just wondering, are you planning to hold the senior prom again this year? Just curious if that's come up. It was such a big hit.
That's a good question. I think Sahand probably knows better than me, but I know that that was our plan as of the last senior prom, because it was a pretty awesome event for everybody involved.
That's great. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Perrow.
I don't have a question. I just want to say how awesome I think it is that you're getting involved in community events, like with the Alzheimer's Association. That's a pretty fantastic thing that you can do to stretch outside of, you know, just kind of being within all of the school events and be out in the community, and make more folks aware of this, you know, the organization that you have. So thank you for volunteering for those. All of those organizations can use as many volunteers as they can get.
And I was just gonna ask, it looked like by that photo at Wahoos, you had a really good turnout, just from, and I know that room was a little bigger. So, the membership's holding steady, kids are engaged and involved, and?
Yeah, I'm feeling really good this year. The turnout there was awesome, and actually, I know specifically there are two girls I met there who came to our meeting yesterday and have since become members. Yeah, membership has been looking really good, and recruitment has been a really big priority of ours. This year, we integrated work groups, which are sort of like little breakout groups we have during our general council meetings, so that general council members can sort of get in on some of the planning that we do. One of these work groups focuses on recruitment specifically. So through that, we've been reaching out to different schools, trying to keep up that membership number.
Okay, great. Sounds wonderful. Glad to hear a great report.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Up next, we have fire station, police sub, and police substation update. Chief Bloom, Deputy Chief Butterfield is going to be talking about this important matter.
So just a real quick update on the North Police Precinct. We are currently on budget. Our schedule was delayed about one and a half months due to the CMU block and some labor shortages. But yes, I put together a recovery schedule to minimize that impact to 17 days. And we have about 15% of our construction that is completed, and to date, we have gas to the site that is installed. Building underground mechanical and electrical and plumbing is completed, and our footings are completed, and they're continuing to prep the pad for the foundation concrete and slab grade pores, and waiting for the site utilities to be installed. Vertical CMU installed to start the 30th of January, and supposed to be finished March 24th, 2023. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Chief, that March 24th date, is that including the 17-day delay that they're currently in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment, that's really good to hear, and a lot of the items you listed are some of the riskier, or more prone to cost overrun. So it's really good to hear that progress. Thanks.
Yeah, you'll find out from fire, once they get the south done, then everything will move north, and we'll do those projects back to back.
Thank you, chief. Deputy Chief Butterfield.
Good afternoon, members council. I got update for the fire station to follow up on police's update. So currently updating Station 7 down in the south, we're at about 25% complete. Power's been installed, foundation slabs complete, and we're going vertical with walls down there, as you can see in this picture. As far as the budget is concerned, we are currently on budget. Schedule is on schedule for Station 7. We were able to get some CMU down there, even though it was slightly delayed, we were still able through some other considerations of being able to keep that on schedule. So we are looking at a late September, early October 2023 opening for Station 7, and as many of you know, there is recreation Ave that connects Station 7 to Lake Hazel, and we're looking for that to be completed in early summer 2023, so we'll have access to the fire station. Station 8, we're 20% complete with that. Foundation's been installed, site utilities are being installed, and walls will be starting next month. The budget for Station 8, on budget currently, and the schedule, we did have about a two-week delay with our CMU block, and so that has consequently led to a little bit of a delay in the overall schedule. But we're still, even with that, looking at a late September, mid-October opening for that fire station. Along with the building of the two fire stations, as you all know, comes the people that we need to hire. So I did want to update council on where we're at, onboarding 30 personnel between now and September of next year. So we currently have a lateral fire academy of nine firefighters that started yesterday, and if anybody had been around fire admin yesterday morning, you would have seen all nine of those individuals in suits, and super excited to get started with their new progress for the city of Meridian and the Meridian Fire Department. The next lateral academy that we will have will be in January, and that'll be nine, so a total of 18 by that point, and then we will round out all the rest of the total 30 that we need next summer by getting nine, excuse me, 12 firefighters through an April academy, a full academy we'll be doing for that. And then full onboarding, we're expecting to be complete with all the staff with the new stations complete, and we should have all that staff on by August with completion of the stations in September, October. So I did want to point out, with these projects, we do have multiple teams of people working on these projects. The design team, the construction team, and the city team are working in lockstep measure to make sure that these are successful, that we stay on budget, and do the best that we can to maintain timelines that are set forth with all of the abilities that we can put towards making sure those timelines stay big. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for fire department?
Mr. President?
Just a comment. I really appreciate the update, and no surprises is the way to go. So if something comes up, you know, do another update. We'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes. Oh, Councilman Cavanagh, you joined for the record at 4:42 PM, so?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Apologies for my delay. I was able to catch a little bit of our police chief's presentation and was able to be here for, for Chief Butterfield's. Chief, would you mind maybe just walking council briefly through kind of what the staff strategy is? I know with these two lateral classes, and then the upcoming classes summer, we're not going to put all of those staff in the two new stations, correct? I mean, we're, we're going to pull teams from other stations so that kind of our, our two new stations are a mix of both seasoned and new staff? Is that correct, or has that not yet been decided?
Yeah, that would be correct, Councilman Cavanagh. The two stations will be, or each station will be staffed with three captains, three drivers, and three firefighters. So that would be a total of six captains, six drivers, and six firefighters. So we will have to have internal promotions, as these are all entry-level firefighters. So we will need to promote the other people who will be internal promotions to move up into those ranks and those positions of the captain and the drivers. There's potential, I guess, that some of the new firefighters might actually make their way out to those stations. But I, I do know that we do have quite a bit of interest in the existing ranks of people who want to, for legacy reasons, be the first one to open a fire station.
Totally get it. All right. Well, thanks, chief. Looking forward to that update, too. And I know you and the department do a good job of keeping council up to date about promotion ceremonies and whatnot. So appreciate you keeping us in communication. Sure.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, chief.
Yep.
All right. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Councilman Byrne.
President, per IDO code 74-2061D, like to move into executive session.
Second.
Motion is second to go into executive session. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Absolutely, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne? Councilwoman Perrow?
Aye.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilman Borton?
Aye.
Councilman Hoagland?
Aye. All ayes, we will be into executive session.
Aye. All eyes. We will be into executive session.
[Censorium]
Mr. President.
Councilman Byrne.
Do we have a quorum yet? Do we have a quorum?
Uh, we do not.
President.
Yes, Councilmember.
A move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
We have a motion second to come out of executive session. All those in favor saying aye.
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 Any ayes? We have come out of executive session. Next on item is adjournment. We do a one, two, three, four.
Mr. President.
Councilman Burke. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks all.
Mr. President.
Started.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. You are at our city council regular meeting. And to begin this meeting, we'll start with roll call attendance. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow? Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
He is here. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Can you guys not hear us?
That is a volume issue on my end. I have the volume on now. He is also here. Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, our next item of business is the Pledge of Legions. Would everyone please rise? Our next item is the community invocation. We will be led tonight by Pastor Vinnie Hanke. And so, please bow your heads or take this as a moment of personal reflection.
Evening, city council members. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and pray for you as you begin your meeting. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for, God, just the change in seasons. It reminds us of the passing of time and asks that you would help us to acknowledge your control and sovereignty over each and every day. I pray for this council meeting. Would you help them to listen to what's brought before them with wisdom, with discretion? Would you help them to make decisions that would bring unity and peace and benefit to the citizens of Meridian? And above all, God, we ask that you would help us to be a city full of neighbors that would love one another and ultimately glorify you. And I ask this in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. That's true. Appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Just a quick moment of privilege of me. I just wanted to thank Pastor Hanke. You know, he's been kind of a fixture of our meetings over the past year, attending these on a fairly regular basis. And I just wanted to say thanks. Your prayers have resonated with me in each of our council meetings and in my home. And I just, I know it's time away probably from friends and family in your church. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to doing this.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilwoman Strater?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move that we, it looks like there are no changes, so I move that we adopt the agenda for you to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second, just to adopt the agenda as published.
Oh, sorry, as published.
And we have a motion as second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, public forum, do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. President, we do not.
Okay. Next item is the action items. And tonight, public hearing has been continued from September 6th. This is H 2022-0030. Sonia, you provide the staff report, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hoagland. Counsel, just a moment here. All righty, the first application.
Sonia, I guess, do I need to say, I think, Chris, that we are officially opening the public hearing on this item, so?
Thank you.
Great. Now we're official. Let's go forward.
So, the first application before you is a request for a modification to the existing development agreement and a conditional use permit. This site consists of 11.65 acres of land, 18.75 for the overall site, its own CG, and is located at 2600 East Overland Road. This property was annexed in 1994, and a development agreement was approved in 2016, which was later amended in 2020. A preliminary plat was approved in 2021, which included the adjacent property to the east. A final plat has not yet been approved for this property. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this site is mixed-use regional. The applicant has submitted a modification to the existing development agreement to change the development plan on the northern portion of the site from a retail grocery store, as shown on the left. So, just to back up a second, it's everything north of Cinema Drive here that they're proposing to modify. And they want to change the development plan to multifamily residential and vertically integrated residential, as shown on the right. The multifamily development is proposed to consist of 345 apartment units, and the vertically integrated residential is proposed to consist of three commercial workspaces with two dwelling units over each commercial workspace for a total of six units. A conditional use permit is requested for the multifamily residential development, which will include a mix of studio, one and two-bedroom units at a gross density of 29.61 units per acre on 11.65 acres of land in the CG zoning district. The conceptually approved Winko Grocery Store on this site would have provided a regional draw to this area as desired, whereas residential uses do not, but they do provide housing for workers in the mixed-use regional designated area and the general vicinity. A multifamily residential development consisting of 360 units by the same developer was recently approved to develop on the adjacent property to the east. This is proposed to be the second phase of that development. Although the residential uses are not integrated with the adjacent commercial uses as desired in the mixed-use regional designation, pathways are proposed for pedestrian connectivity between these uses. Staff is not recommending a mix of integration, a mix and integration of uses with this development, as is typical in MUR areas, because the property has already been entitled with zoning. Access is proposed from the south via South Wells Avenue to be extended from East Overland Road, a mobility corridor, with the first phase of the subdivision, and from the west via East Cinnamon Drive, a local street with the second phase of the subdivision. This site is approximately a half-mile west of the Overland and Eagle Road intersection on the south side of the I-84 off-ramp. Transit services are available to serve this site. Overland Road is listed in the CIP to be widened to seven lanes from Locust Grove to Eagle Road between 2036 and 2040. The intersection of Eagle and Overland Roads is listed in the CIP to be widened to seven lanes on the north leg, eight lanes on the south, eight lanes on the east, and eight lanes on the west leg, and signalized between 2031 and 2035. The ACHD report states the PM peak hour level of service is E, which is an acceptable level of service. Although overall, the level of service may be acceptable, certain roadway segments and/or intersections, turning movements are currently failing and will be worse with the adjacent multifamily residential development to the east. Can the proposed development approve? This should be considered when determining if it's appropriate to approve this application prior to the aforementioned improvements planned with the CIP being completed. Off-street parking is proposed for the multifamily residential development in excess of UDC standards. A minimum of 640 spaces are required. 643 spaces are proposed. Bicycle parking is proposed in accord with the minimum standards. An additional 10 spaces are proposed for the vertically integrated residential use as required. A minimum of 3.15 acres of common open space that meets the standards for such is required. Common open space exhibit, excuse me, let me grab that here, right there, depicts 2.55 acres of common open space, consisting of linear open space along the north and west boundaries of the site, a park with grass consisting of 9,803 square feet in area, a large amenity area, rooftop terraces on the clubhouse and leasing office, and street buffer and additional common area along East Cinema Drive. There is a 20-foot-wide sewer easement located along the west boundary of the site with a 14-foot-wide access road that will prohibit landscaping in that area. Therefore, much of that area will not be able to be counted. An alternative compliance application was submitted earlier today to the common open space standards, which has not yet been reviewed or acted on by the director. A clubhouse and swimming pool and other site amenities are proposed for the development that exceed the minimum standards. Conceptual building elevations and perspectives were submitted as shown for the proposed structures. The two northern buildings will be four stories in height, the two southern buildings will be three stories, and the clubhouse will be two stories. A modernist vernacular theme of design is proposed with a monochromatic color palette of off-whites and shades of gray with lap siding accents and decorative balcony railings for color and texture. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual. The commission recommended denial of the conditional use permit. The commission was not a recommending body on the development agreement modification request. That's only a city council decision. And I'll go over a summary of the commission public hearing. Elizabeth, excuse me for butchering your name, Elizabeth Cockritz, Givens Persley, Jonathan Fragoso, Morgan Stonehill Partners, Ryan Morgan, and also Morgan Stonehill Partners. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Written testimony was received from Greg Goines, Winko Foods. He's in support of the proposed development. He states that they plan to remodel the existing Winko on Progress Avenue and don't intend to build a new store in this location. Through their due diligence, they've concluded that this is not a favorable location for another Winko, and it's not in their best interest to sell this land to another commercial or retail user. They believe this is the perfect infill location for more multifamily residential development. Another letter was received from the applicant's representative, Elizabeth Cockritz, Givens Persley, response to the staff report in regard to condition A3, which requires a final plat to be submitted, approved, and a plat recorded for the second phase of this subdivision in order to create a developable parcel prior to submittal of a CCC and DR application for the proposed development. The applicant requests approval to submit the CCC and DR applications after the final plat for this phase has been approved by council but before it is recorded. And just to note that that does not constitute subdivision of property, council's approval. The findings for the first development agreement amendment and preliminary plat require the property to be subdivided, i.e. a final plat recorded prior to submittal of any CCC and DR applications for the site. Therefore, this request cannot be granted. Condition B 2.9 requires street signs to be in place, sanitary sewer and water system to be approved and activated, road base approved by ACHD, and the final plat recorded prior to applying for building permits. The applicant requests this condition is amended so that they may apply for building permits after the final plat is approved but not yet recorded. Again, the final plat is required to be recorded first in order to create a parcel that's eligible for development. This request cannot be granted. And lastly, condition A2 requires a revised common open space exhibit to be submitted prior to council that complies with the minimum standards. And the applicant, as I mentioned earlier, is proposing to your, proposing a request for alternative compliance to these standards. Staff is not active on that. Key issues of discussion, discussion by the commission are as follows: Desire for better pedestrian access and walkability to be provided to adjacent businesses and employment uses within the area from the proposed development. Concern pertaining to the impact on traffic in this area if the proposed development is approved. And not in favor of more apartments on this property as the multifamily development to the east was approved largely because a retail grocery store was conceptually approved to develop on this site. The commission recommended denial of the application for the following reasons: Traffic concerns and the approved development plan for this site is retail space and desire for it not to change. Written testimony has been received since the commission hearing from Sean Freeman. He is opposed to the proposed modification to the development agreement to allow multifamily development in place of the conceptually approved grocery store. He believes the city's infrastructure cannot support any more high-density He believes the city's infrastructure cannot support any more high-density residential projects, and approval of such will negatively impact the city in the future. And another letter from Greg Goines, Winko Foods, pretty much the same as the first letter. He is in support of the proposed modification to the development agreement and the multifamily development. He states this site was originally purchased to relocate their store at Progress Avenue. Since that time, the impact from COVID and the housing growth in the Meridian and the Treasure Valley area made it no longer economically feasible to do so. Instead, they plan to remodel the Progress store and eventually build a new store in South Meridian. Outstanding issue for council tonight is the council should determine if the Commission's recommendation of denial of the conditional use permit for the multifamily development is appropriate. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Sonia, any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Sonia. Could you pull up the Future Land Use Map or the one that shows kind of all the uses? Yeah. If we look at this overall area of mixed-use-regional, what percentage have we approved that's, if you know this, that's multifamily versus retail versus commercial?
Councilwoman Strater, I'm sorry, unfortunately, I do not have those calculations.
Got it. And then, I mean, certainly with these two developments together, it's well over 600 units total, multifamily. Are you aware of any other multifamily units that we've approved in the last year that come to mind in this area?
Movado to the south.
Yep.
We have more on the east side of Eagle, the BVA Brighton Development.
Remember that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. That might be something I'll circle back to. I just think with this area, how it's developing, I kind of want like a holistic, and I apologize, I should have sent this question before the hearing, but I'd like a holistic look at the uses that we're getting out of this area. Just really worried, we're getting a lot of mixed-use-regional that's all turning into multifamily, and that concerns me. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Is the applicant here? Great. And who will be coming up first to speak? Please give your name and address for the record, and we'll give you 15 minutes.
Jonathan Fragoso with Morgan Stonehill, 2700 East Overland Road. Morgan Stonehill, very grateful for the opportunity to present in front of you, in front of the council again, present another project for your consideration. A little over a year ago, the council approved Phase 1, which was 360 units to the east of the subject property. Currently, we are on track to pull building permits immediately pending the recording of our final plat, which is with the assessor. We're excited to start work on that project and deliver much-needed housing. To give a little background on how this project came about, in late 2021, we were approached by Winko Foods to acquire this property. After, as Sonia pointed out in her staff report, after performing due diligence and evaluating the performance of some existing, of some new stores that opened, Winko elected to focus their growth efforts further south, consistent with the growth patterns of the city of Meridian. Based on the strong performance that they saw at Chindon and Linder and the existing Meridian Road Store, they want to find a second, a third location, are committed to having three locations in the city of Meridian. Just that third location will be a little further south. Similar to planning commission sentiments, we were very shocked, and we mourned the loss of the Winko. Next door, Winko was one of the reasons why we loved our site for Phase 1, and it was going to be a great amenity for the residents there. However, we jumped at the opportunity to bring some much-needed housing in an area that we believe really merits it and is well-equipped to handle additional housing. From the onset, when we were first presented with this project, we set out to create a unique, one-of-a-kind project that's not like anything else and very differentiated from Phase 1. The ultimate goal of having both projects appeal to all styles of living. Unlike Phase 1, this project takes influence from more modern and urban design elements, and whereas Phase 1 was more driven by a farmhouse contemporary look. But again, just want to stress that our goal of this project is to offer a variety of housing types, what we believe to be the ideal area along the I-84 with close proximity to great jobs. One of the other things in the design element of this project, we sought out to emphasize and create gathering areas and walking trails that not only connect to Phase 1, but also highlight the interconnectedity of the proposed apartments and the future retail to the south. Ultimately, we envision creating a community anchored by two apartment projects with ancillary retail services on the remaining five acres. The goal is to have, create a community where someone can grab a meal or dessert, walk back over to the plaza area along Cinema Drive, and enjoy a nice conversation and dinner with their family, or take their ice cream or food or snack and go on a walk through the interconnected trail system. With that, to give into a little context, I want to introduce Ryan Morgan to speak a little further on the project.
Good evening, everyone. Ryan Morgan with Morgan Stonehill, 333 Joseph Hume Street, Denver, Colorado. It's a pleasure to be standing in front of you all again. One thing about being a developer, what I really enjoy about being a developer is really learning and getting to know our neighbors. So, it was wonderful when we had our neighborhood meeting that those who actually attended were the owners of the, some of the commercial uses in the area, and they had overwhelming support for our project for a number of reasons. And actually, based on that, I was able to go and probably within a quarter-mile, walk into every business and talk to the managers, people that work there, and the owners, and ask them if residential in this section was something they really wanted to see. Everyone jumped at the opportunity to be like, we love, people can walk here, we love the interconnectedity, and we love that we can actually have housing for people who can work here. As everyone knows, it's very hard to find people, or employees, to come work in a lot of the businesses that are surrounding this area. And not only will we be able to provide housing, but we'll be providing rooftops for people to actually access and participate in the local businesses. We had a few letters of support that I believe should have been sent to Sonia from a few of the neighbors, including the Cinema and the Hideaway Bar, as long as hopefully a few others that had mentioned they were going to send the letters. But it's been a wonderful process getting to know the neighbors and hopefully add to their, their attendees and the neighborhood in general. I'll turn it over to Deb Nelson to take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Deborah Nelson, 601 West Bannock Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. First, want to say thank you to Sonia for her work on this project. We're actually in full agreement with all of her conditions of approval. The applicant withdrew the request to change the conditions that she noted at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we accept all of her conditions as stated in the staff report. And as has been noted, we're asking for a change in the site plan and the existing development agreement through a DA modification, and that's shown here, the old plan and the new plan. There is still future retail shown here on the south in concept that will be along Overland between the proposed apartments and Overland Road. The proposed development is consistent with the mixed-use-regional designation, which calls for a mix of employment, retail, and residential uses. And specific to Councilmember Strater's comments, at the opening here, you can see this large area. We don't have the percentages that you asked about, but you can at least see by color breakout, the retail and hospitality are the purple areas, offices in green with medical and red, which is similar to office, single-family homes in yellow there, and the blue and multifamily, including our first phase and the other projects that were mentioned with the Movado to the south and the Brighton project. You're still at only a 1.46 density of units per acre. Your plan calls for a range of 6 to 40 throughout the entire area. So, there still is a need for higher-density residential in this area to support the employment opportunities and the concentration of transit and arterial roads. Also, the proposed apartments are on an infill site that's along the freeway, behind the retail, and continuing the transition from that single-family residential that you can see in the yellow over to the more intense uses with the commercial. So, not only is this consistent with your flume, but it's also consistent with other objectives in your comprehensive plan, including to focus on areas that are within the city limits, that are vacant infill properties that would benefit from existing services that don't cause you to extend the boundaries of the city, and that also provide higher-density housing along transit corridors and provide a mix of housing units. In fact, this is along transit with Valley Regional Transit Line 42 running right along the site, providing connectivity all the way from Nampa to Boise, and including local businesses, shopping opportunities, and employment opportunities. In addition to the DA modification and consistent with the existing zoning, we are asking for the conditional use permit for the multifamily use with 351 apartments and four horseshoe-shaped buildings that step back in height from Overland, designed in a way that creates these attractive streetscape perspectives, concealing the parking and internal areas and tuck-under garages, creating courtyard-style open space areas and several, the larger, open space in the middle, but also several smaller gathering spaces throughout. We've got a boulevard feel entrance that, with the focal point of the clubhouse as you enter the property, as well as a wide east-west corridor, creating that connectivity and viewscape, all in ingrading and connecting to the adjacent commercial uses. This aerial really shows that arrangement and how that creates that urban-like block pattern that's called for in your comprehensive plan for the mixed-use-regional area. This view also showcases the plaza area that will integrate with the planned retail to the south, providing outdoor seating and gathering to support and integrate both of those uses. Here you can see through some perspectives, the apartments will include a mix of studio and one- and two-bedroom units in a range of sizes with patios and balconies, open spacious floor plans, large island kitchens that are ideal for entertaining, large bedrooms with walk-in closets, dual vanities, large showers and ample storage space, all-in-all quality And in further keeping with the mixed-use-regional designation, the project includes three live-work units located along the southwest edge of the plaza, where residents can conveniently live and work within their same unit. You can see here that plaza area to the south that I mentioned that is in between the residential and the future retail to the south with landscaped and terrace seating that will integrate the two uses. And here are some more views of that plaza area. The architectural theme is that modernist vernacular, really a more urban style, and really emphasizes clean lines, simple color scheme, but with punctuations of accents from lap-sighting and decorative balcony railing for color and texture. This combination of elements and forms and color palettes creates a balanced, soft composition with appropriate depth and human scale, and provides something new and unique for the area. Here's some of the concept themes, example products. A little more focus on the open space areas here. The project includes this wide perimeter walking path on the north and west sides, and it will connect over to Phase 1 to create a larger loop serving both properties. Open space areas include the large, a large centralized amenity area with a park, grassy lawn area, a striking two-story clubhouse with rooftop terrace, a pool, barbecue, seating, and hammock lawn. A second 1,200-square-foot rooftop terrace shown there centrally in the purple color will overlook the central amenity space as well, kind of a unique amenity area for residents. There are significant landscape buffers, providing screening along all the perimeter And significant amenities here. You can see here the 3,800-square-foot clubhouse with game room, coffee bar, lockers, work-classroom stations, event space, 3,500-square-foot 24-hour fitness facility with yoga and spin studios. I already mentioned the rooftop gathering spaces. Other outdoor spaces include the large park area, the hammock lawn, courtyards, six separate picnic areas with tables and shade structures, and of course, the striking central pool shown here, that will create a nice gathering space for all. ACHD has reviewed and approved the traffic analysis and the proposed access points. In conjunction with the first development, this project will also be responsible for constructing Wells Avenue at Overland, and will add a signal at that intersection, which will actually happen here in the near future with Phase 1. And that will include pedestrian crosswalks to provide new pedestrian safety in the area as well, and connectivity across Overland. Cinema Drive will be extended as part of this Phase 2. And also, I think most importantly to note is that the trips generated by this project are significantly lower than would be associated with the Winko, because that was also studied, lower at AM peak, PM peak, and Saturdays, and a difference of 1,600 trips per day versus 7,700 trips per day for the Winko, so significantly less. Despite staff's recommendation for the project in a split vote, as was noted, the Planning and Zoning did recommend denial on the conditional use permit. However, on the conditional use permit itself, the Commission's comments were all positive. They liked the look of the project, they liked the feel of it, the amenities, the open space, the layout, the design, and they were very favorable to it. Some even commented that they liked the value of the apartments in this location, but the concern that was raised was really more growing out of the lack of the Winko. They were frustrated over the loss of Winko. I mean, Commissioner Seale even noted, we recognize this isn't the applicant's responsibility, we just think that, you know, this was a good location for a Winko. The applicant didn't have the opportunity to respond in full, because this happened during the deliberations when the hearing was closed, but hopefully, we've provided some new information tonight from Winko to help explain that, in fact, rather than just relocating their South Meridian store here, Winko has now decided to remodel and expand their existing store on Progress and find a new location and site a new location, which requires different spacing, still in South Meridian, to benefit South Meridian residents. So, there will be additional resources and groceries in this area, not fewer, and not consolidated onto this site. And so, it's not viable for Winko. Winko's chosen not to proceed, but it does provide a nice opportunity for infill residential along the freeway, behind planned retail, where you are along a transit line, and can fulfill those goals in the comprehensive plan that we outlined, all in all, within the zoning that exists, and creating lower traffic impacts. So, for all of those reasons, we are grateful for your attention, and would stand for any questions, and ask for your approval.
Thank you, Deborah. Council, questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Strater.
So, Deborah, for this mixed-use-regional area, you have the square footage of the office and retail. Do you have the square footage of the multifamily?
And I don't have the square footage of the multifamily, just because they're not tracked that way, they're tracked in unit counts.
I know.
But I do have that. And that's, these are built or building permit planned square footages, so not just zoning.
Yeah, I understand. I think, I think what I, when I probably alluded to this in discussions with Sonia, but the concern I have is that Meridian does not have a very, we're starting to finally, but we don't have a very deep job base. Like, we're more of a bedroom community that's trying to create stronger employment centers, right? And so, this is a key area. It's right along the interstate, it's in a good location, and so, part of what I'm struggling with is every time that we take a mixed-use area and we flip it into multifamily, we're losing precious space for jobs that we'll never get back. I agree that multifamily should go along transportation corridors, and I'm a big fan of building more housing. In fact, we've actually built more multifamily units this year so far than a single-family residential. But I think what I'm struggling with is I just need a picture of, for all the space that we've dedicated, and what we would expect, you know, how much of this is going to multifamily now? Because it looks to me like a much larger percentage than we would have expected is.
Councilmember Strater, I'll do my best to respond. I guess I'm not, I don't see a lot of multifamily here. If you look at the, the blue areas are the multifamily relative to the other locations, but I do think it's important for the city to have a strong employment base, and part of what makes that employment base is having the right mix. So, I agree that if this were primarily multifamily throughout the 635 acres, you wouldn't have the right mix. Your comprehensive plan that the city worked on and carefully thought about what would go into these types of designated areas-
and carefully thought about what would go into these types of designated areas called for six to forty units per acre. So you have thought about how much residential is appropriate to balance that out on the whole. And, and you're short still significantly at less than one and a half. So there is dense development needed. And I think it supports it, you know, in the same ways that you heard Mr. Morgan talk about, that when he went and visited with businesses, they were readily welcoming having not only consumers next door, but employees next door. They were concerned that they didn't have the workforce they need. I think, I think everybody knows that people are having trouble getting workforce. And if they could have residents come in right next door and fill in some of their labor needs, they felt like that could strengthen their business. So I guess that's part of why we put this slide together as we felt like it does show you that balance you're, you're seeking.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, if I can respond a little bit, I think what I'm struggling with is this isn't all filled out, right? So some of it still has to be designated. And part of approving your property to the east, the rationale for that was the WinCo. And so, you know, these decisions in, you know, one-by-one basis, we make exceptions. And then what we end up finding, and we found it in some areas, is we end up getting really overweighted into multifamily. And I hear you on the housing for workforce. I think what I'm struggling with, though, is we have a huge lack of affordable housing. And this is like a Class A-plus gorgeous apartment building. But, and if you want to comment on it, I know it's very unusual to comment on rents, and I wouldn't expect you to, but, you know, if you can kind of comment on the price point, because, you know, someone that's going to be able to afford a luxury apartment, I'm just not sure that that fits the exact workforce housing that we all are envisioning. We're, we've had a lot of discussions about affordable housing lately. It's a huge struggle for us. Building housing is a part of a tool to do that overall in the market. But, you know, again, we're, we have a huge amount of approved Class A-plus gorgeous housing coming, but I'm struggling with where are the workers going to live?
Councilmember Strater, I understand that point. And we definitely are not trying to say that this is workforce housing and in the category of affordability rankings. I just meant that it can provide workforce for adjacent people living next door. But, I mean, I think, as you know, there's been a lot of studies that discuss that quantity of housing overall does feed down the chain to affordable housing. So yes, this is intended to be a nice market-rate apartment building that caters to young professionals that are looking to, to live and work and establish, you know, their homes in Meridian and that aren't quite finding exactly this product. So I do think it's great that you're getting more of that in Meridian, but there's still high demand. And so the, the demand from the consumers would suggest that there's still more, more demand for that and more room for that. But it, it, yes, it won't cater to every need that you have for housing, but it does continue to fill in some variety, certainly differentiating from the single-family residential that is in excess perhaps in this area.
Mr. President? Yes, Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Thanks. And Deb, I gotta admit, I'm kind of tracking a lot with Councilmember Strater. And perhaps it was Mr. Morgan's comment about the excitement from the movie theater and kind of correlating that to employees living there. And a quick calculation on my phone shows that a team member at the movie theater can make at most thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents an hour. Would that employee be able to live in this complex?
Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, Councilmember Cavanagh, fair point. You're right, that we aren't going to be able to fill every job with, with these rents. And, but we also do expect to have dual-income folks living here as many young people start out with that mix. And, you know, this area is filled with more than the movie theater jobs. So I think they are really looking for workforce, but this is also an area that's filled with offices that have employers existing in them as well. And that's, that's part of the, the benefit of having something that's close by, that's walkable, that's serviceable to these homes, as well as being on that transit line. I mean, if you're, if you are a young professional in this day and age, you are accustomed, especially in, you know, larger cities, if they've come from different education points, they're accustomed to living in this type of apartment and getting on a transit line and going to their job. That's a desirable mode of transport and lifestyle. And we've got other employment bases here that do pay a higher living wage that could support this opportunity here, that this helps to round out, whether it's a walking distance or a transit distance. We think there's some nice compatibility there.
And Deb, you won't find anybody that's more excited about transit lines and being able to move employees from, you know, where they live to where they work. But that is much different than trying to allude that you could work within the complex and live within the complex and to reference an employer. But I even think if two people lived in the same place, listen, this is a beautiful complex, but let's also be direct about who it is and who it serves. And I, I guess I am failing to see the connection that when I look at the employers that are around there, and I live in South Meridian, that the employers around that area would provide a wage that people would be able to live in this beautiful complex. So I just, I just would encourage maybe a little bit more directness and authenticity in your testimony that gives counsel a better understanding about who this can serve.
Councilmember Cavanagh, yes, noted. I'm sorry if we've overstated that proximity benefit. Just sharing what the neighbors have shared about the, their reaction to the proposal. So certainly not trying to say anything different than those facts.
Councilwoman Pearl?
Thank you, Mr. President. My fellow councilmembers have stated my thoughts very well, so I won't repeat those. We won't kind of continue along that line of thinking, but, but I am in agreement with them, with them on concerns, not only of replacing this very needed ground for service-type, service and retail-type opportunities for the, the many residents that do already live in this area. But I have concern about, about building more multifamily because we have approved a significant amount of multifamily that hasn't been constructed yet. So although, you know, you were talking about the, the need for multifamily and, and that there still is need, and there absolutely is. If you go look to rent an apartment in Meridian, unlike what we're seeing happen in Boise and Nampa, it's harder than those two cities to find one in, in Meridian. But we still have about a year and a half worth of construction that hasn't been built yet. And we have an enormous amount of, of units that have been approved. And so if we have really accurate data on that, which you can't possibly have yet, of course, and we can't either until there's, are constructed, it's, that's tough for us to say, yeah, this area for sure needs these additional three hundred units to make for over seven hundred units right on this property, including the first phase. So it just has, but I, but I have some more specific questions for you because I don't, I don't want to end the conversation there and assume that that's what our decision is this evening. So I'm going to ask some specifics. The first one is, did the applicant consider any other designs that would move the, that would move the buildings that are farthest to the north towards the interstate a little bit farther south? Because from what I understand, they're only about eighty feet away from the interstate. And I don't know if that eighty feet starts from the building itself and it goes to the center line of the interstate. Can you, can you show me exactly where that eighty, eighty feet falls? It seems like a very short amount of space. I'm assuming there's going to be balconies on that side, which is not ideal. So I want to talk about that topic and get some more understanding of that.
And Councilwoman Pearl, so the eighty feet is from the property line. The property line actually sits back from the off-ramp, which is actually still set back another, I don't know the exact distance, I apologize, but that's also set back from the freeway itself. So I think when we looked at it, it was about two hundred feet total from the edge of the freeway.
Mr. President?
Yeah, let me interrupt one second here, counsel. I want to get your input on something. There, there are two parts to this, public hearing and application. Item A is a development agreement modification. And if we don't agree to the modification of the development agreement, the conditional use permit is basically not going to pass. So I don't know how far we want to delve into the CUP before we have some dialogue further on, on the DA, so maybe.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I apologize. I meant to ask Bill or Sony kind of the process question at the outset about how we wanted to handle this. I think it's appropriate for us to discuss the DA, likely make a decision on that, and then make a decision on the CUP.
If I might interject and ask a question, Deborah, whoever's appropriate. In, in the first letter from WinCo, it talked about they wanted to sell the property to someone who didn't, wouldn't, it wouldn't be a commercial or retail interest. So in my mind, that tells me that if this does not get approved, that land, probably, I don't want to know the details, but I'm assuming there's legal mechanisms where it goes back. They would own it, they would keep it, and it would sit until they knew they could sell it to somebody where it would be housing as opposed to retail. If that's their intent, that they don't want commercial or retail entities to purchase, have that property, then it's in their interest to, to hold it. So I guess my question to you is, there, there is the front portion, which looks like there's an opportunity for some retail. What, what type of retail is that?
We're currently working through the design of that. And obviously, with retail developments driven a lot by the users, but we're reaching out to restaurant users. Our main goal is to reach out to large national chains, sit-down restaurants. We want to see this large sit-down restaurant in the city of Meridian with ancillary use is kind of along the, for the remaining parcels.
Okay, thank you. So basically, it is an entity that is no competition whatsoever to, to WinCo groceries.
That is correct.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Yeah, just one more. You know, one of the concerns I have is also, and if you could, is there any way you could zoom out to a view that sort of shows all the roads with your property and the adjoining property? One concern I have is, we're talking like seven hundred units, you know, all commuting to work, all leaving at the same time, maybe coming home around the same time. And for this area, I just want to understand how that's going to work in terms of, and I saw your chart about the comparison, but yeah, thanks, this is helpful. Like, something that, maybe walk me through between both properties together. How's that going to work with that much traffic?
So Councilmember Strater, sorry, this isn't as zoomed out as you might have been looking for, but at least it does show the new signalized intersection here. And so as this is improved, there will be turn lanes added, which will help the flow of traffic that go in and out to Wells here. Wells is getting extended into the site. And then that will connect and be extended east-west on Cinema that will connect all the way over to the existing movie complex where Cinema Drive ends. And so that'll create more connectivity off of Overland's serving this, at least smaller area. The, the signal and with, with the turn lanes and the signal, that did meet ACHD's levels of service for this area. And that was actually called for by the WinCo development originally. But as they looked at it again with background traffic, they said that the signal could still be warranted there, which is beneficial to the area to be able to put that in.
Yeah, and just to make sure I understand, and so, I'm trying to remember what Cinema looks like. It's been a while since I've been to this area of Overland.
You might have a better map that, I don't know that we've got.
Yeah.
You can kind of see it here a little bit. You see, and see Cinema cutting across, and yeah, you can see that a little bit there, that how it goes across.
Yeah. So I just wanted to understand if there were kind of like multiple ways to get to Overland. It looks like there are. Can you sort of walk me through that? And then for your subject property and then the adjoining property, are they both going down Wells?
Right, yes. So both of them are served on Wells and, and would have the connectivity through to Cinema. And so currently, that east-west Cinema and north-south stub of Wells don't exist. Those are getting built with these projects. And, but it does exist to the west off of the subject property site. And so we'll create that new connectivity. And yes, there are additional outlets from that area that go down to Overland. And so this, this new project before you now in particular will have, you know, both directions of travel traffic that are convenient for those trips to exit either way.
Right. Mr. President, if I can continue.
Councilwoman Strater, go ahead.
Thanks a lot. But in fairness, like, most folks, I think, are going to be trying to get to Eagle Road probably to access a freeway, to be fair. And so most people are going to be turning left. So there's one intersection that sort of serves that left turn. Am I understanding that right, or is, are there multiple intersections?
That's correct. The, the new signal will serve those left-turning trips.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. Yeah, I don't know. It's just a concern for me. It just feels like a huge amount of people and human behavior, right? Like, a grocery store, grocery store has a lot of traffic, tons of trips, but it's, it's kind of consistent. And we're talking about commuters. Some of them might take, you know, transit, that'd be great. But, but a lot of people are pretty car-dependent here. So, you know, it's, it's just a huge concentration of apartments in one area right there, side by side.
Yeah, Councilmember Strater, you know, just a comment. Certainly, any, any development of this property is going to add traffic, no doubt. And so it is, it is part of just working in infill development into existing infrastructure. And so, yeah, we just have to look to see that based on the traffic impact study and ACHD's analysis, while this will continue to impact area roads undoubtedly, it has, it does still allow for the, for Overland Road to operate at a level of service for this signalized intersection and turn lanes to function, and just significantly less than what would be from a large retail store such as WinCo that has a regional draw. So bringing in trips from a much larger area.
Yeah, but to be fair, ACHD did comment that there are points of failure, right? And so it wasn't, unfortunately, it wasn't just acceptable. It was like, there are, there are real concerns.
Their VC ratios at the turn signals on Eagle and Overland have delays, and those exist now, and those will continue and be exacerbated. The levels of service overall are met and will continue to be met with this development.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, and I just had one more, if you guys don't mind. Sorry, I'm prattling on here, but has there been any change in your timing? You know, I mean, I don't know, don't get into the absorption of your other project and all that, but, right? I mean, you're in a very dramatic, quickly dramatically changing interest rate environment that affects real estate asset prices pretty dramatically. There's a lot of building activity in this area, just a lot going on. So what's your timing with this project?
To your question, yes, it's a rapidly changing market. We will acknowledge that. And, you know, there is some ambiguity in what asset prices are today based on the volatility in interest rates. That being said, we would want to proceed and move as quickly through this process as we could. The rate-limiting step will be the final plat recording. We've run into this. I think realistically, we would be, based on our past experience, we would be between twelve to eighteen, or twelve to sixteen months from starting construction from this point forward.
Thanks, that's really helpful.
Were the questions for the applicant? Thank you. We will now ask, is there anybody signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, nobody in advance.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the room or online that is wanting to testify on this? If you're online, please use the raise-your-hand function, and we will bring you in. Doesn't look like we have anybody in that area. All right. Does the applicant want to make any closing comments?
I just want to address one of the points that Councilwoman Strater and Cavanagh brought up, which was who this property will cater to. When we design this, we set out to cater to the workers at the new BVA Ventures facility over there. I think you have about a quarter of a billion square feet of office with all high-paying jobs. Powers Engineering takes up a whole building, ESI Construction, St. Luke's to the north. This is really the closest apartment site. And I think we're catering to those jobs along Eagle Road and also the work from home population. These people seek out, if you're working from home, you choose quality of life. We believe that they will flock to the amenities that we're offering. It may not be appealing to kind of the blue-collar workers. You know, someone working at the cinema just from a price point perspective. That being said, one of the things we did from our design, we sought out to make our units smaller and more thoughtful. If you're renting less square footage, typically the price is less. We're still setting the rent process to kind of what I discussed with Councilwoman Strater. Councilwoman Strater, I apologize. We don't know what that is. Pricing has changed. We're working through that process. But again, we're kind of designing thoughtful, more, you know, smaller, more thoughtful spaces with great amenities to cater to the widest mix of people, of renters that we possibly can.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Pearl.
Don't run away. So let's just chat about the point that you made about appealing to individuals that might work in some of the properties over by BVA. Would you walk across that intersection to get to work?
No, but I believe, we believe they would drive.
You believe what?
I would agree with you, Councilwoman. I believe they would drive.
You believe they would?
They would drive.
Oh, you, sorry, I apologize. You believe they would drive?
Yes. Which adds to traffic concerns.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel, I think discussion on item A, development agreement modification is warranted. I think that's where we need to start. And, and then we will see where that goes, because then there will be discussion on the CUP if that is amenable to the counsel for item A. Just to kind of kick things off, you know, one of my concerns is, I did, did some research and I thought, okay, Winco's no longer at the site. Okay, what does that do for our grocery market? And it was surprising how many grocery stores are in the area. When you take the subject property and you go to the new Albertson's at Eagle and Amity, it's 2.5 miles. Well, you could head west, you go to, you end up on Overland. Walmart is two miles. Well, let's go east. Oh, Fred Meyer's, 2.5 miles, Overland and five mile. Now, if you cross the freeway, if you want to take Eagle, you can be at the Albertson Marketplace, that's 2.5 miles, or closer to 2.5 to three miles. Take Locust Grove, another Fred Meyer, two and a half miles. Or if you go to Meridian Road crossover, Winco is 1.5 to two miles. I'm thinking, okay, as far as grocery stores are needed in this area, I mean, you've got, you've got your choice. And right now Kroger and Albertson's, Fred Meyer and Albertson's are competitors. Who knows what's going to happen in the future? But you have Walmart and you do have an Albertson's to choose from, so. And the fact that they're not selling to anybody for development for commercial or retail property, what does that mean? Then it's going to sit there. They have control of that site. Now we have our comprehensive plan. We know what we want to develop. And we were excited about having this there. We saw that as a, as a good fit. But at the same time, if they choose not to go here and want to go further south, which we all know needs another grocery store. That's why we're excited about this. It's on the south side. Albertson's open on south side. That's a good thing. So in my mind, I'm like, okay, if not this, then what? Especially if they control it and are not going to go commercial or retail. Now, how long would they hold on to it? I don't know. It could sit there forever. We've seen property in Meridian at times sit for very, very long times because of competition or what have you. People want a certain price point, and they're not going to sell till they meet. There's a number of reasons, so. To me, we have to kind of face that issue. If not this, then what? And we have no control over that one. So that's, that's one of my arguments to take a, take a look at modifying the development agreement. The, the trips per day, the facts are there. I mean, it definitely significantly reduces the trips. There are, of course, peak hours when there will be subject. I liked having Wells where you've got right turn lanes, straight lanes and left turn lanes, because that's certainly needed. They can also go down to Millennium, I believe it is, and there's a light there and go, go out. It will add traffic. Anything we ask for will, will add traffic. And finally, on the subject about, you know, the price point. I know we want more what are called workforce housing. But at the same time, I think in Councilwoman Pearl, you've been, you've been working on this and doing some research. You know, I think if we want to have workforce housing, affordable housing, however you want to classify that, there are probably going to be incentives that the city needs to, to be prepared to offer. I don't know what that is. We're not there yet. Right now, it's the market that's determining what the price point is, and I'm fine with that. This is, when you look across to the east of Eagle and on the south side of Overland, Topgolf location, those apartments are going to be on, towards the higher end as well. This one is, I would classify as higher end. They're looking at the remote worker, and just as I'm in the middle of a hiring process with someone at my work, that remote issue is huge. That is, a vast majority of applicants want to work remotely. And it's one of those things I think in society today we're having to grapple with. And I think this is just in response to that. What does that look like? What amenities are on the site? What makes that attractive to someone who's going to move here and work remotely? So I, I think it's a serious consideration we have to give to this in modifying this development agreement. I know I might be the only one who thinks that, but that's just how I'm looking at this, going, okay, what is realistic? With the requirement that they have as the current owners of this property, and again, there might be legal things in that contract that reverts back, I don't know, don't want to know, but we have to kind of deal with that, that issue as, as that's a possibility. And, and then maybe it becomes a car dealership. I don't know, but I think those are an IL though. So something, something to consider. Other comments? Certainly welcome.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief. I appreciate your very diplomatic approach to this whole thing. And I think the applicant started this. The comments were really correct. This was not their choosing. Winco has said, hey, this is not what we want to do. This is not where we want to put a facility. And certainly, Winco's decisions, business decisions shouldn't be passed on to this applicant or any applicant, whoever follows a land use project. The piece that I'm, I'm wrestling with is, I believe I was on the council when this annexation came through, and, and the council was wise to put the development agreement, because what the council said and what we heard from our community at the time is that we needed more retail. And while, yes, we do need grocery, and again, as one who lives in this area, we're excited about the Albertson's, but I think our citizens still desire more grocery, more retail. I think that is part of the reason as to why the council crafted this development agreement. And so I was, I was reluctant when this change came before us a year ago for some multifamily. I think some council touched on this, that I, we were supportive because it really supported the mixed use. I'm just struggling to see how more apartments support our mixed-use desire. And certainly, I'm a huge proponent of housing, and I liked it. Well, when it was presented to us, it was presented as a season. Now we've learned it's season's phase one. I think they're great projects, but I just don't think that it is the right type of project that warrants making a change to our development agreement based on what we heard from our citizens at the time of the annexation.
Thank you for that input, Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Strater.
Sure. Yeah, I agree with Councilman Cavanagh. And I think part of what I'm having a hard time with, and we've heard feedback too. We had like an intern that talked to us a lot about mixed-use development. One of the things we really struggle with is that integration of uses. And even if I look at the mixed-use region overall, you know, I want to see things spread out a bit more. I think it makes sense to have high-density housing, but I, I don't want it all crammed in right together. 700 units just feels like a huge amount of housing to have in such a concentrated area. I have concerns about traffic. And I do agree that we have to think about, you know, we might have to wait. That could be hard. I mean, it's hard to see an infill piece of property that doesn't develop yet. But, you know, that's, that's the property owner's decision. I can't control that. You know, as a council member, we try to set aside land for different uses. And one of my biggest concerns is that we're not getting enough of the job creating uses of the retail, you know, supporting uses of, especially the commercial uses. And so every time that we make this decision to make a trade-off, it's really hard. And I think particularly where with the same developer, we've already approved a big multifamily development with the RSH now being, having this different use right next door. I'm struggling with it. You know, so I'm going to be in favor of denial tonight. That doesn't mean I wouldn't be open-minded down the road. You know, in a couple of years, if things change and the traffic situation improves, and we don't have these failure points that we've heard about from ACHD, you know, maybe then we'll look at that. But I just, I can't in good conscience put this much multifamily together in one spot with those issues. Trade-off forever. So, my opinion.
Any other comments? And Mr. Neri, let me ask, I think item A, 1A, would be a motion for that instrument number, the 2016? If there's an approval or denial motion to that changing the development agreement? Okay. So counsel, we can close the public hearing. Are there any other questions you want to ask of the applicant?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we close the public hearing for application H20220030.
Second?
Motion second to close the public, public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have it. The public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Strater.
Mr. President. Sure, I, I will try to make a motion here. I would move on item 1A that we deny the request 2016-060157 for the development agreement modification. And the reasoning for the denial is similar to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the reasons of wanting the current approved development plan for this site, the desire not to change the land use to multifamily residential, and because of traffic concerns.
Mr. President, I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion a second. On that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater?
Aye.
Pearl?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Horton?
Aye.
Oakland?
No.
Rise, one no. The development agreement modification is not agreed to. So Mr. Neri, conditional use permit, do we need to take a vote on that, or?
Still need to take a vote on that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Just to check with Mr. Neri, I think it would follow then that we would deny a conditional use permit. Do I need to give an additional rationale?
Yes, since the records would be separate, so yeah, I mean, the basis can be simply that because there was no amendment to the development agreement, therefore there's no ability to approve that CUP since that's not an allowed use.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
I move to deny item 1A, the request for the conditional use permit because there was no amendment to the DA agreement. And so it does not make sense to approve the conditional use permit at this time.
Mr. President, I second that motion.
We have a motion second to deny the conditional use permit on item 2022-0030. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Strater?
Aye.
Pearl? Cavanagh?
Aye.
Horton?
Aye.
Oakland?
Aye.
All eyes motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for Matadoria State Subdivision, H2022-0043. And the staff report will also be given by Sonya Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 4.84 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 1235 East McMillan Road. This property was previously platted as Lot 5 Crestwood subdivision number one. And a property boundary adjustment was approved in the county to shift the eastern property line to the east an additional five feet. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is low-density residential. The applicant is requesting annexation of 5.09 acres of land with an R4 medium-low-density residential zoning district and a preliminary plat consisting of 14 building lots for one existing home that is proposed to remain and 13 new single-family residential detached homes and two common lots on 4.84 acres of land. The proposed gross density of the subdivision is 2.89 units per acre, which is consistent with the desired density in the low-density residential future land use map designation. This property, along with the property to the east, is an enclave surrounded by existing and future single-family residential detached homes to the north, south, and west. Development of infill properties is supported by the comprehensive plan, provided it doesn't negatively impact the abutting existing development. Because like uses, single-family residential detached residential are proposed on similar size lots, the proposed development should be compatible with adjacent uses and shouldn't have a negative impact. Access for the subdivision is proposed from the extension of the stub street at the west property boundary. The existing access via McMillan is required to be removed, and the existing home is required to take access internally from within the subdivision and be readdressed. A stub street is proposed to the east for future extension and interconnectivity. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along McMillan Road. A two-and-a-half-foot-tall rock wall is proposed at the back edge of the street buffer along McMillan Road, and a berm is proposed within the buffer. Fencing is not proposed. A micropath connection is proposed to the sidewalk along McMillan Road for pedestrian access from within the subdivision. Typically, developments of less than five acres in size are not required to comply with UDC standards for common open space and site amenities. However, because this is an annexation request and the site is just under five acres at 4.84 acres, staff is recommending the applicant provide a minimum of 12% or 0.58 of an acre of qualified open space and a site amenity consisting of a minimum of 1 point. The reason for staff's recommendation is because when a county subdivision such as this redevelops and the lots are just under five acres in size, a series of new subdivisions could develop without adequate open space overall. The plans currently depict 0.49 acre of qualified common open space consisting of a 7,080-square-foot common, common area lot, linear open space with a pathway, and half of the street buffer along McMillan Road. A sitting area with a concrete or paver surface and two benches is proposed as an amenity. Staff is recommending an additional 0.09 acre of common open space is provided. The applicant has confirmed the proposed parkways comply with UDC standards and provide an additional 0.19 acre of common open space, which exceeds the requirement. Trees and vegetative ground cover should be provided within the parkways in accord with UDC standards. Staff recommends a shade structure and picnic tables are added to the common area to qualify as a picnic area amenity, or the applicant may choose another qualified amenity. Six conceptual building elevation photos were submitted as shown that demonstrate what future homes in this development will look like. A mix of single-story with and without bonus rooms and two-story homes are proposed with a mix of building materials, including stone veneer accents and architectural elements. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Marty Camberlango, the applicant, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Randy Spiewak, Parkins Norris Number 14 Lateral Association commented on the application. And written testimony was received from Neil Wilson. He just stated that he recently put solar panels on the east side of his house facing the subject property and requests the proposed homes are no higher than two stories, which they aren't. So doesn't appear to be any issue there. Key issues of discussion was the surface water delivery, design of the pressurized irrigation system, and plan approval from the lateral association. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the city's requirements to provide a pressure irrigation system for proposed subdivision. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the city's requirements to provide a pressure irrigation system for proposed subdivision. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation and there are no outstanding issues for council tonight. No written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. That will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. Is count, is the applicant here to testify? Come on up. State your name and address for the record and you have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Marty Camberlango, 1110 North Five Mile Road, Boise, 83713. Sonya did a really good job of explaining the project. I think anything that I would actually add would be already what she's talked about. I might just add that we had a neighborhood meeting and we had one person come. And his concern was just that if the developer, development happens, that what the, that would, would be a lot of dust in the area. And we told him that we would be sensitive to that. Apparently, when they did Silver Spring subdivision, when they excavated the roads, they had a system over there where they refined their soil and made, the, the, made it into topsoil. And apparently it created a lot of dust. So we don't plan on doing that. Then also in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we didn't have anybody that was against the project. And so we don't have, as far as I know, anyone that has any problems with it. The only thing I might add is the staff recommended that we have various slot sizes so that would lend to a little bit, bit, little bit of variety. The smallest lots, 8,132 square feet. The largest lots, 11,219 square feet. And the home that will be left there is 32,231 square feet. So we'll have a variety of product in there. And I'd like to just add, like Sonya already said, was what we'll be doing in there is compatible with the surrounding area. And when it's all finished, it'll look just like the Silver Spring subdivision, just like it was a phase of that subdivision. And so really, I don't have a lot to add to, to that. And we just stand for any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, sir. Council, questions? Councilwoman Strater? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Perrow. We'll go your direction first.
No worries. Thank you. I, I just wanted to confirm that, that you are willing to do the additional small amount of open space that, from the open space calculation.
Well, we don't want to have to do it, but we will.
Okay, I understand.
We found out that in our research that we're required to have a parkway. And they're allowing that to be part of the open space. Well, when we calculate that in, we're, like Sonya said, I think we're over that. So. I think we're okay with it. I think it'll work.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to get clarification on that, just the way that it was presented in this evening, I, I wasn't 100% sure. And, Mr. President, one more question, if I may.
Councilwoman Perrow, go ahead.
Thank you. So to that end, have you happened to decide on an amenity?
No, we haven't decided on the amenities yet. They've made suggestions in here that you have a park benches and, and even suggested we might do a little pergola type of a cover over the top. We just did a project in Eagle where we have park benches, we have picnic tables, we have some grills that you can use. And we'll probably follow along those lines, but we'll, it'll be nice and it'll be something that the people will want to use. I think staff will make sure we don't we do something that's workable there.
Yes, sir, they will. Councilwoman Strater? I'm sorry. Councilwoman Perrow.
Can I, may I make just one more comment? I, I just want to say thank you very much for, these infill projects are tough and they often come before us with challenges. And I just really appreciate that you're doing all you can to make it as close to the area around you as possible. Really appreciate that you're trained to stay with a similarity to, to that neighborhood. And that, you know, a lot of times folks come in and it's, it's hard to do something with five acres. It really, there is really not a lot of options. Especially if there's geographic issues that cause the property to be developed in a unique way. So thank you for keeping it in a similar field to what's already there.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Strater.
Our great minds think alike. So Councilwoman Perrow covered all my questions. Mr. President, that's why I didn't say much on the last application, because she just basically read my mind.
Oh, good. And we have a couple of councilmen online. Any, any questions for the applicant? Heads shaking?
I have none. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll see if there's any public comment, public testimony. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, nobody was signed in online or in person.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed in. So do you have any wrap up comments on this?
Not really. I just appreciate the opportunity to come before you and, and anxious to get this project underway if we can get your approval.
I, I did have one question and it's really not to the property to the west. Is that the, is that Boyd Hills old place? Okay, that's where, I thought, when I saw the map, looked at the location of that. I know.
Kind of interesting, all their, these remaining properties are all landscape companies. I feel, I think they feel like they're being squeezed out a little bit. Of course, one of them that owns this property is already relocated in Meridian out south. So he can continue his business and not be so crowded out with what's going on over there.
Sure. Yeah, great. Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Counsel, item two is before you? Or discussion?
Mr. President, I don't have anything additional to add. I
Councilwoman Perrow.
They've done a really great job with this and, and I'm in favor, so I'd be happy to make a motion unless there are other concerns. I move that we approve the Matador Estate subdivision, H oh, we do need to close the public hearing. Thank you. Mr. President, I move that we close the public hearing for H 2022-0043.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Strater? Councilwoman Perrow?
I'm, I'm honored to be confused with her because she's amazing. You just keep doing that. I'm, that's my honor.
I, I do the same with my daughter and my sister, so it's the same.
I haven't heard you do this with Councilwoman Burton yet, so waiting for that one. Okay.
So one of you is going to have to grow a beard, I guess. I don't know.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. I move that we approve the application for Matador subdivision, H 2022-0043. For the, oh, I better get my little cheat sheet here. Let me restate that motion, if I may. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2022-0043 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 25th, 2022.
Second.
A motion second to approve this item. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater?
Aye.
Perrow?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Horton?
Aye.
Ogden?
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. The item is approved. Our next item is we show executive session. However, in the work session, we were able to accomplish all that we could for tonight. So we don't need to have this executive session. I'm sure staff is very excited about that. So we will vacate that item and go on to future meeting topics. So council, any, any comments on future meeting topics? Nothing there? Next item adjournment.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All ayes.